Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Before we start with the pledge, I would just like to make a statement. The Board wishes to apologize to Brandon Day. We had a board member seeking out information regarding Mr. Day, which is not our responsibility as a board. We as a board will continue to strive to do better in this area and what is considered our position. Again, Mr. Day, we are sorry and appreciate everything you do for the students at Richmond Community Schools. Please, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sherry, our mission statement, please.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide equality education that empowers students to be successful in global communities.
A roll call, Sherry, please.
Deanna, here. Angela, Casito is absent with notice. Kyle?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I'm here. We have a board.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. I'm sorry. Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Wamsley?
Yes, we have one resignation, Bridget Thompson in the food service. And Marie Praciola, Praciola, I don't see us here. She is a new hire in our food service. She was a substitute, is now moving into a full position. Just as a point of reference going forward, the Schedule B academic programs are now listed in the personnel report as requested. There were no corrections to the February 14 regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. Next agenda item, we're going into closed session. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session. I'm sorry. Sorry, guys, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Okay, looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 8A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Do I support?
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Sherry?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Deff?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will be coming back out to finish our meeting after our closed session. Okay, we're going to go back into open session at 7:28. Okay, Mr. Wamsley, a bond update?
On Thursday, February 23rd, the district held a prebid walk-through for the upcoming summer site and paving projects. Just to recap, this work includes the entrance off 32 Monroe at the City of Richmond's library, the parking lot behind the high school auditorium, the student parking lot in front, the road between the high school and athletic complex, and the new parking lot that will be put in just east of the high school new auxiliary gym and fitness center, and the new middle school dumpster relocation and Berkin closure on the west side of the pavement behind the middle school. Those will all take place this summer. We have a bid opening this week, so that will be coming to you for approval through the next couple of board meetings. Work is also, the work is scheduled to begin May 1st, where the parking lot behind the auditorium will be removed and prepped for asphalt, which will cause staff to move to a different park in the front of the building while we begin that and try to expedite the summer projects. The other site work and road work will not begin until after school's out in the summer. The remaining site projects or the last part of the bond will be completed in the summer of 2023, which will include the road along the west side of the property, the road in front of the middle school, which will include a new bus lane, the parking lot to the east of the middle school gym, and the paved area behind the middle school, and then the new parking lot, approximately 10 to 12 cars depending on the design, by the varsity baseball field is in that scope, all part of the bond. The work will begin on the new softball baseball field this, excuse me, the new varsity softball field this week. If you've traveled behind the middle school, you can see that the construction fence has already been installed. Work will begin on existing varsity baseball field, the freshman and junior varsity baseball field, and then the new junior varsity softball field, which is the old varsity field, around June 20th after the sports, sprint sport season is done. And then just finally, just as a point of note for the board, as we approve this contract, I'll be using the general fund operations budget, which will be, it's already allocated, I'm not asking for a different, I'm not asking for additional dollars, to cover the cost of the irrigation to the varsity softball field. Varsity baseball field currently has irrigation, so we are putting irrigation in the varsity softball field. We did some improvements on the baseball, turns the line when we did the football field, at least the connection and the water may, we do not do any changes to the infield structure. That's it for that.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation on custodial services. Mr. Wamsley?
Hey, it has been now four years, and we have been with the current company, ABM Custodial Services. As with every district, it has been a challenge to staff our custodians. At one point, we've been down to five, we should have 13. We look at the total numbers of people who are back, we're about 500 short right now. But when I got hired in in 2014, one of the goals the board at that time was to end the privatization of support services and bring back them in-house. Our contract was up last year with ABM. We have in the contract the ability to extend it for two years. This year, because of all the construction, we did extend it one year because we didn't want to switch over custodial services in the middle of all the construction. We could extend it one more year. You do have an opportunity here as a board to consider bringing custodial services back in-house, which, other than snow plowing and grass removal, would fulfill that board in 2014's goal of bringing back everything in-house. So tonight, I'm going to share with you how you can do that from a financial perspective. In your packet, you should see a spreadsheet that looks something like this, it's on the screen. The light blue column is what we currently have budgeted for costs for ABM. I'm just going to scroll down to the bottom to start with, so you can see the bottom line. The column on the left totals $530,000. That's currently what's in the line item for custodial services. If we were fully staffed, and we have not been fully staffed for several years, it would cost the district $711,000. Our goal is to have four custodians at every building, a custodial supervisor, and we have currently the current contract. We had at one time a half-time HVAC, a half-time plumber, and a half-time, excuse me, half-time HVAC, half-time electrician, half-time general maintenance. Over the course of this contract, filling those positions has become quite challenging. We share that with New Haven. If you recall, this contract, we bid together with Lou Haven, so they have the other half of those positions. We currently have no electrician on-site, however, with the bond renovations and the amount of electrical that's undone, the need is really not as significant as it was four years ago when we had the start of this conversation. There is always need for a plumber. I don't support it at home doors, but we do have kids that decide that it's funny to take off knobs or destroy faucets, and when, obviously, when we find out, know about them, we get restitution or try our best to get restitution. But we do have damages that happen. We have toilets that get plugged, we have sinks that get plugged, just normal maintenance. Currently, we contract that service with a company where we send them the work order, and usually within a couple of days, they're out. Sometimes they stack them up and come out on the weekend and do multiple projects at one time. And then we currently have, really, the only one, currently have of those three, the HVAC, the electrician, is the general carpenter, a general custodian to hang things, fix things, you know, from toilet paper dispensers that come off the wall and we've got to put a new one up, to hanging signs or banners, to periodic tables that get hung up, to banners, et cetera. So if we were fully staffed, we would really have to increase our budget $181,000. And so over the course of the budget, we have been really just budgeting what our usage is at. We did change the contract two years ago. We did an amendment that instead of giving a flat rate, we were paying them and that they were absorbing all the overtime. When we did a cost analysis, it was not beneficial for the district to do that, so we pay what's called a timing variance. We only pay for the hours our employees work. And where that comes in is if you have, you know, they're, it's a business model, it's where they're banking that one thing happens and we're banking that if we're fully staffed and we need additional support services or costs, it takes them longer, we're only paying a set dollar amount. As the staffing numbers became an issue, that's when we changed the contract, so that we were reducing our costs. So that's what you have in front of you. So if I go back up and I say, okay, if you want to consider bringing in-house, these are some of the positions, and the names on the left side are the names given by the company. If you, if the board ultimately gives me direction tonight that you want to go in-house, I will begin working with the company to phase that contract out, as well as work on the organizational structure of how we implement in-house. Our goal would be to keep all, if not all, as many as we can of our current employees and begin marketing to help other employees that are interested in doing custodial work, work for Richmond Community Schools. The biggest challenge we have had in hiring is the delay in the company processing employees. We have looked at a variety of options of hiring them part-time through a third party like Edge Staff or so forth, until they became, they finished all their paperwork with ABM and then they switch over there just to get people in the door. It is, it is a process or a problem that not only Richmond's having, every district I've talked to, New Haven in particular, there's other districts like Utica that use it part-time in the evenings or, it has been a hiring process. In some cases, it's been over two months just to get a person processed. We're losing people. The district has itself taken out ads, mostly through social media. I posted something on Facebook, I got about 15 people. I called them directly, I did some follow-up with them to make sure they were going through the process. We did get one or two from that process, but our hiring process, you know, borrowing fingerprints and background checks comes like fine, is a lot quicker. And I think that's part of the reason we're looking or we lose. It's not the only reason. This is a industry-wide, they are, I believe the last I heard, they were at like 25% open vacancies within their organization. They are a nationwide organization, so this is not just unique. Moving them in-house, I don't know if it will be any better. I'm going to be honest with you, it is a, but it's an opportunity here as I explain how it's an opportunity that we could bring it back in-house. Again, if I move forward just the custodial supervisor in some fashion, you will see the difference between what we currently pay in ABM and what we currently would pay that was in Richmond's debt, primarily. That is due to the retirement rate. We pay, currently pay 43.28% retirement. That cost is not, ABM does not have that cost. There is a markup fee that ABM does that covers their costs. So as you go down the line, you can see three custodians for the district through ABM costs about $125,000. If we were to bring those three custodians back in-house, again, I did not change any rate of pays, it's just looking at what we would offer, you know, the healthcare cap, the dental insurance that would occur to me. Again, this is prefacing if we choose to offer this. When you talk about a benefit plan, like we do with our bus drivers and our central office and our childcare and all the non-union group, we establish a package. Now, I am very proud that that package has been pretty similar in cost. There's no benefit in terms of coverage to be the superintendent versus a bus driver. We get covered the same if they qualify for insurance, you know, added costs from a healthcare, the dental, the vision perspective. There is a risk when you bring custodians in that your workman complains, your rates go up. There is a risk that your insurance rates will go up. When it goes up, it affects everybody in the pool, not just this one group. Again, if you look at, we look at, we have three day custodians and nine evening custodians, you'll see the difference. Currently, it's about $402,000, it would jump to about $527,000. General maintenance, we currently have one person, this is one I would recommend not providing, and you can, and redefining the roles as they become Richmond roles with that supervisor. Again, it may not call the supervisor, but it could be a quasi-maintenance person in that role. The challenge with the general maintenance, the electrician and the HVAC that we used to have is the rate of pay. What we were offering at the beginning of that contract is not what the going rate in the market is offering, and you're really, you struggle finding someone for this position. In this, I would recommend putting a secretarial position. We're going to need someone because we now have to take on all the ordering of materials. We have to take on all the scheduling, the payroll side of all the aspects, the fixing of equipment. In our current contract, we negotiated the last contract that we, we have all the equipment. It is our equipment. If we choose to break our ties with ABM, that equipment is four years old, so we're going to need someone coordinating just the, the conducting of services for delivery and pickup and maintenance of that. I would look at this position, if this is where the board wants to go, I would come back to you with, with an org chart because I think this position can also serve multiple facets to relieve some other points in the organization, such as, this is a facilities part of it, I would move athletics to this position and take that out of the building secretary role. We currently pay .25 of the high school, one high school secretary and one middle school to coordinate athletics, and there's a lot of logistics, some more than others, but I would remove that and put that into this role. The management overhead, we currently pay $71,000 to ABM for their overhead. What that includes is going to be the supplies that they order for us, the wax that they order for us. We currently have a company that comes in and does our gym report. That's another thing that we need in coordination with, you know, coordinating that schedule. But this also covers their overhead, their HR department, their, we have an account executive, we have an account manager, and we have an account supervisor. Most of you know our supervisor, Dara, she's a full-size here, but we have a half-time account manager that we share with New Haven, and then over him is another account executive through ABM. Again, this is where all their costs to cover those other areas fall. We wouldn't have that cost. We're shifting it because the role of marketing, the role of posting, the role of recruiting people now falls on the district, which would be in our HR and our central office area. Other costs to see, and these were looking briefly at old, when I say old, years ago when we were in-house, we're talking 2008, '09, and that timeframe, so some of this may not be applicable, but, you know, we have a line item there for mileage reimbursement for the supervisor. Currently, ABM pays that for the supervisors there to go pick up stuff. They have to go to Ace's over. We pay mileage for that. Gas for the vehicle in the budget you are approving tonight is a vehicle. That vehicle now becomes part of not only transportation, but also going to be used for maintenance, for them to transport equipment and stuff and deliveries between buildings. Custodial supplies, we averaged a couple of years ago about between $20,000 and $25,000, that's toilet paper, paper towel, hand sanitizer. We are now all responsible, we would be responsible for ordering that and supplying that. We may have to go with a different contractor, which usually what they do is if you switch contractors, they will give you all the devices for free, as long as you order the materials from them. So we may have to exchange out paper towel holders, soap detergent, which we've done in the past. We did it with EnviroClean, we switched, when we switched to ABM, we moved to different dispensers, they come in and they install. Equipment repairs, we're going to have scrubbers, we're going to have stuff that's going to need repairs if we currently own. Again, that's a starting point. I, I don't really have a true understanding, other than talking with other districts, kind of what they, they do, and based on our size, this seemed like a reasonable number. There's a miscellaneous expense. We put in there $10,000 for a line item for capital outlay project equipment that might need to be, we might, if the floor scrubber dies, we might need to buy a new one. And so that's a placeholder for equipment to be able to purchase it. So when you add up this total cost here in the far-left column, if we were fully staffed, we're talking $880,000 in custodial costs. That's like your retirement, it's about everything. That is $350,000 over what we currently have budgeted. Now, what I did was I took some line items that we know are going away at the end of this school year, that is a current expense that we could reallocate to the custodial line item. Like, for instance, we have $10,000 in a bucket list, we have the maintenance vehicle that we're purchasing, we have $170,000 in marquee and scoreboards that we were planning on purchasing, and we have $50,000 line item for signage and graphics for all the new facility and replacing some of the old stuff that we're working. So that gets us down to about, the difference between this 350 and all these one-time is about $90,000. We also have some one-time expenses that are going to go away, like our bill for paternity fees. I expect next year, we're going to be budgeting less. We do have, we do have money in there to cover for this year, but it shouldn't be that high. I did not include that in here. These are just some of the big ones that we know for certain are going away. If you look at all the contracts that are currently settled for the future years, we have approximately, and this is based on a number that was established last summer when we settled those contracts, we have different people in those positions right now, so I'd have to update that number. But that's a, that's a high, that's a safe number from the perspective of what we were obligated back last summer. It actually can come down. We do have two contracts that are just wage openers, the administrators and the pairs, so those would be coming up. If you assume, based on what you're hearing, the governor's proposal was over $400 per pupil, we don't know with the Senate and the legislators, so if you assumed a flat enrollment and we got at least $200 increase per pupil, this would lead you expenses less than revenue of about $90,000. Again, this is assuming we are fully staffed from July 1 and it could be our bill expenses.
Right. When you say that, are you, are you anticipating if we moved to do this, that you would have more, fully staffed, or you're just saying the odds are it's not going to have, it's not going to make a difference to be fully staffed if we go in-house?
Based on how the market is going right now, our rate, when we increased it, or I increased it, a dollar, I had to notify the board, because we were extremely short-staffed. That's the target number that ABM is marketing. There are districts that pay a lot less than that than what we do. So when I say fully staffed, do I, am I optimistic we will be, yes, but I'm a realist, and I don't believe July 1 we will be fully staffed. However, some of the benefits that we have, that we can offer individuals versus what they're currently getting, and I'll just look at the insurance. Currently, it is a $3,000 deductible in their insurance plan in ABM for a single subscriber. Ours is a $12.50 if you take the high, high deductible, and that could be the plan. That difference alone, and they would pay less for insurance in Richmond than they do for ABM, could be some incentives to few people to come here, because they're paying less out of pocket for insurance and it's putting more in their pocket in their pay job. Again, I, we compare, again, these are, these are hopes, these are what we think could happen, but I think it's, if we truly want to bring them in-house, we've never had an opportunity in the eight years I've been here, probably in any district, the 10 years before that, to even consider because of the cost of, it's insurance, it's the retirement cost that's prohibited. And for those of you that, you probably all know this, but the state incentivized, district privatized. Years ago, they gave you more money per pupil if you privatized, and they forced districts to do that because that was the only way you were getting dollars. What has happened, when you privatize, you have less people paying into the retirement, so it creates more of an unfunded liability for district, which is what Tammy presents every, or the auditorium then every October, saying, if we dissolve, this is what the, this city or this our resident owe towards that liability. So that's, that is the challenge. And in many districts, we have slowly moved in-house, we brought our food service in-house, we brought our bus drivers back in-house, we brought our coaches and academic, or academic SCABs back in-house. I'll be honest, for what we paid for landscaping, it would not be beneficial for us to do it, that would still be a private item, but we, like, we have an opportunity. With these one-time dollars going away and the potential that you have for the legislators to, you know, you've heard with the governor's proposals, we're waiting for the legislators in the Senate, the House to send their proposals. There's also conversations about trying to have the legislators pay down our retirement rate so we don't have that high of a liability. Again, we won't know until the budget, but the challenge we have is, I have to have some direction, because if we're going to renew the contract, I've reached out to ABM, say, is there things that we could offer, could we pay, give them a stipend for healthcare to reduce some of their costs to try to attract people? It's very challenging. If we don't, we could bid custodial services up. We're going to bid them, we need to bid them the month of March, so that we have time to review the bids and bring it back to the board and that whole transition. Or the other option, as I see, is if you're going to consider it, to me, this is your window of opportunity to bring them back in-house. I don't see in the future you're going to have this, maybe I'm, maybe I'm being pessimistic, but the odds, if you look at history, it doesn't show too well.
I have some questions. I don't know what they make, what they mean, but with bringing them in-house, would you be able to offer them more per hour?
More per hour?
How would it?
This is based on what they currently rate, make it grow. We could do a variety of things. We could, if we're going to offer them the same insurance, we could, we are obligated by law to pay only up to the hard debt, but you could pay less than that.
Because will we be like competitive with what other districts pay their in-house custodial services?
We are in the normal range, and below than the normal range, is the way ABM described it when I got it the last week. In fact, the account executive that oversees the supervisor and manager didn't realize we had already raised the rate, that what he gave us the rate. I said, well, that's what they're currently making. He's trying to get other districts to raise it to what we're paying.
And it's more per building? Because most of the schools I work in, it's like one morning, one afternoon custodial per building.
The current model is 1.6 to 2.30, and then three, what we budgeted for, 3.230 to 11 positions. There are not... There are not, so you have four per piece of the cap ahead. We are not in any building fully staffed. So I may only have two in the evenings in some buildings, where I have to head custodian, come in.
Is that what you have to four of them? So we have four for that?
That would be four. The original contract had the middle school, I believe, two, three and a half, splitting with the elementary. We increased that because of, number one, we also got larger square footage of our buildings down. We have 10 extra classrooms now in the elementary school. We have four extra classrooms now in the middle school, that's a large drop. And you have a whole other wing now in the high school that we're gonna have to. Again, we're, I wanna preface, we are not fully staffed. If we were, we should be able to cover everything and keep everything clean. We are quick cleaning to get everything covered, and we're not doing the thorough cleaning that is expected, and not only to keep my back to the side.
What would be the process for, like, let's say, the ones who are working in our buildings if they wanted to apply to be our employees? Is that, do they do that, and what's the process?
That would, there's no, that's what I'm looking for Tammy, where they can't, no compete, there's no non-compete clauses with custodial. The only one that potentially has a non-compete clause would be our account manager, but our account supervisor and custodians, ABM itself do not have a non-compete.
So they can apply if they want?
So they could apply.
So that they can stay here and not?
If Robert, who's the custodian here, wants to stay here, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that he's not coming. So we just need to do our paperwork, the process, do our paperwork. We already have the fingerprints on them, we already have the background, because they had to have that process done to become an ABM employee, and so that's our dissent to us.
And can they unionize and all that?
This is a right-to-work state, it's a free union, if they want to unionize, they absolutely can.
When we talked about this in 2014, one of the big things was the equipment. We didn't have the money to purchase all the equipment that's needed, which was the reason that we went outside. You said something about, we own, we own the equipment, it's our equipment now, some of it's four years old, so that's not...
The EnviroClean contract that I inherited, the equipment belonged to EnviroClean. Then we moved to DM Bird, and when DM Bird left and ABM came on board, at that time, we negotiated the contract that the equipment is ours. At the end, we pay for that in our fees every year, but at the end of the contract, if we don't stay with ABM, the equipment stays for us.
Because that was, that really was a really big conversation about the fact that we couldn't afford the equipment, you know, if we made them in-house. Just my point of view, I would love to have them back in-house.
And I just wanna be clear with the board that bringing them back in-house, you know, our buildings have done a remarkable job trying to make our custodians feel part of the building, even though they are in another, they participate as much as they came with all the activities. Bringing them back in-house, there, again, there's a risk that insurance claims are gonna go up for everybody. There's a risk that the, what was comp claimed is gonna go up. When you just look at statistically, it just, it happens by the major. Tammy, am I missing anything else that we've talked about from a risk perspective?
No, just finding them, making sure you have them.
You know, we now take on the ownership, though I would argue that we've been doing this, trying to the last couple, hiring them and processing them in-house.
I have a couple questions. As far as the equipment, do we, do we know what the life expectancy of our scrubber cleaner, do we know that? I mean, what are we, I guess somewhere down the line, we're gonna have to replace them, what do, do we know, have any ideas?
It's probably about a five to six year, depending on the care that's been taking care of them over the course of the year.
As far as the electrical piece, then, we'll have to work with a local company, or?
Yeah, what I would do is when we, before we had Mr. Reinhardt's position, what I did was I created a list of vendors or contractors that I would contract with, and as I got a work order, I just forwarded them the work order directly. There would be certain vendors similar that we would have to do that. So I'd reach out, and my post electrical would give me a per DM, what would you charge as per hour rate? If there's an electrician that, oftentimes, it's been companies that do it after hours, around the weekends, in addition to their normal business. So we've given them badges and access to the building, we can run background checks, et cetera, and to make sure that everything's a good, that's what we'd have to do for electrical.
Okay, same thing like with our heating and cooling?
Heating and cooling, we currently have a contract with Metro Control that goes for another year. It's a set rate. I would recommend keep doing it, they know our system, they change all the filters, they, they, once we get full control back after the construction, because there's still, there are certain areas that they're still working on with the boilers and all that, tweaking it, I guess. I would recommend staying with them, they know the system.
About as far as the supplies, is there like a central, you know, like how we buy the supplies for the school, is there a place where we can not use the toilet paper and the towel paper?
When we bought the supplies through, EnviroClean was our, we paid for the supply. We use APECT paper, which is for the paper, paper towel, toilet paper dispenser. Some of our paper products has been reduced, we installed the electric load dryers to reduce our costs on paper. We find a company similar to that that we could supply and just order and set up an account.
Thank you.
Just trying to establish that custodial subs in case we don't have any in-house subs.
We could ask, I'm not aware if they do have custodial, just have more of the, the, the. I reached out to them before, we didn't really have anyone to stand by.
And one more question. You mentioned with the secretary that you could, you wanna cook the athletics portion with that secretary possibly. That would be eliminating?
I'm not eliminating it.
I mean, not eliminating is like FTE or?
I don't.
There's the dollar secretaries that are doing it, it'll still be full time, they just won't have that work. Well, it's, it's, it's the same for, it would be 52 weeks, so.
We'd have one person be 52 weeks, and the remaining is seven. Again, that would be a position, that dollar value is just a placeholder, because that position doesn't currently exist in the bargain, it would have to be negotiated. But, I based it on a certain rate of pay over the 52 weeks. But I would not be the two at every building, plus the director of student support services secretary. Those are big, I'm not looking at reducing FTEs on them, or reducing secretary, shifting responsibility to. My hope is that by doing that, some of the measures that we're trying to implement, like the attendance and tardy reports that we're running, and being more on top of that, it, we're shifting their duties to maybe be able to run those and streamline other processes. But that would be, we're not recommending any of that.
Any other questions for Mr. Wonsley on this?
I just have one comment to make. I would like to see us go back to having them in-house. I worked here when we had both, and I felt that the type of service we got and received was better when we had the in-house, when they were ours, versus when we went out to the company. So I would recommend that we, that we go that way. I know Margaret said that. I do, I mean, I think they work just as hard for us, whether they are ours or not. So I just wanna make that statement. I just would like to just see us bring them back in, and I think it's to our benefit and theirs.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Okay. Danielle? Kyle?
Me too.
Okay. Mr. Wonsley, you have a direction to go with?
So we'll begin working with the organization, the structure, and the negotiations that need to happen, as well as verifying that we're not redoing the contract.
Thank you. Okay, our next section is public comments. Just so that you're aware, I've received an email requesting how the football field yard was paid. I also received another email regarding the liability of holding practice on campus. Both of these were forwarded to Mr. Wonsley to answer. I also received two emails requesting information on the open board position. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You'll have three minutes if you'd like to address the board.
Hello, my name is Ashley Marciel. So I just wanted to come up really quick to address some concerns I have in regards to the contract with the ILUMA being voted on tonight. I just became aware of this, that it was on the agenda, so I only had a slight amount of research on the topic, but from, after looking really quickly, what I'm understanding is that the school will be partnering, or possibly partnering with this company, and that they offer therapy or counseling services for our children. And I'm assuming this will be done during school hours. So first, I'd like to say that I do think it is awesome that you are all being proactive when it comes to the efforts of combating the mental health issues in our youth. And I do think this program could be a wonderful thing for the struggling students who don't get the parental support that they need at home. But I do just want to, or I do hope you remember to take parents like myself into consideration if you do decide to implement programs like this at the school. It does look like there is data collected from our students through the process of the therapy and counseling services, so with that said, I know it's all very new to us, with everything being virtual and collected online, this type of data. And I'm not sure how this software is going to evolve, but I would like to question the amount of tracking that a software program like this could have, or will have on our children. Will this information follow them through adulthood? I know we've all gone through our mental health challenges as adolescents, and would we want all that information to follow us through our entire life? Everything in the cloud, it doesn't go away, so I have some concerns in regards to that. And I guess the other biggest concern I have is, I wanna make sure that if this is implemented at the school, that there is complete transparency with the parents. And I wanna make sure that parents like myself, who are very committed to their children's overall well-being, including their mental health, will have the option to either opt out or be notified if their children request to have therapy sessions during school. And you might already have addressed all this, or be addressing the concerns that I have in a moment, but unfortunately, public comment came before the approval of the contract on the agenda, so just wanna make sure that I took this opportunity to share my thoughts. And again, I'd like to acknowledge that this could be very beneficial for many students, and I appreciate the care you put towards the well-being of our children. And here comes my chicken scratch, so. I also like to say I'm not, I'm not opposed to bringing a program like this to our school for struggling students, but I also wanna make sure that I will have full decision-making when it comes to my children in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name's Kelly Oldani, and I don't remember what else I was supposed to say. I have two children in the middle school. Sorry, okay. So just like Ashley said, we kind of became aware of this ILUMA thing like at the last minute, so of course, we're all trying to research it online, trying to figure out what kind of data is gonna be gathered on our children, and what it could possibly be used for. It's come about that it may be only one particular portion of the program that may be used. I looked it up, there's PT, OT, school psychology, speech therapy, and mental health. I think it's mostly the mental health and the school psychology parts that are bothering the parents the most. You know, the first question that I asked on the website is, why do all students need access to mental health services? While that sounds fantastic, and I love the idea that, as a nurse, I've seen the kids that struggle with mental health problems. I've had them in the ER for days and weeks at a time trying to get them situated, but I think the problem is much deeper than just having somebody at the school talking to them. And then, further, on that same page, when I asked that, the ILUMA website, it says, supporting mental health improves social and emotional learning. That's that key word that kind of triggers all of us. It kind of goes back to the CRT, SEL, kind of falls in that same category as far as we're concerned, and I think that's where we want a lot of transparency, on what exactly this ILUMA contract is going to involve. If it's gonna be mental health, if it's just gonna be speech, what exactly it is. For years, the U.S. Department of Education has worked to transform education from academic-based to molding-assessing and assessing children's attitudes, mindsets, and behaviors. These programs are outcome-based, trends that started in the 90s with a head start in the Common Core, national standards. Now they're using the ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, which follows this trend by rating schools partly on non-academic factors. One of those factors, you're talking about student engagement, school climate, safety. These training, these also train school personnel on when and how to refer children at risk for mental illness. So the question is, just because you can, which is like the question in science everywhere, is should we, or the government, be tracking our students' thoughts and feelings? Yes, I believe teachers have an amazing responsibility at enforcing discipline in the classroom and encouraging individual students to do their best, as teachers have done for decades and decades. But then, on the other hand, when you look at assessing a student on their compliance with highly suggestive, subjective behavioral standards to measure their personality shortcomings, now you're talking a real murky area that even psychologists and psychiatrists can't even give you, it's not clear water, it's very, put it this way, my child today told me he wanted to be, he wished he was adopted, all because we took his phone away because he was having a little temper tantrum. So he comes to school and he says something like that, and all of a sudden, somebody knocking on my door and all this stuff. It's different today than it was when we were kids. I went to Detroit Public Schools, I watched a kid get his butt beat by the teacher because he knocked off your door. Was it good? Now she got in trouble for it. I know you can't do that today, but it's kind of the other way around. Parents are worried.
Tammy Steyer, I just wanna address it too, it's the same topic, kind of, I just, I do wanna thank you guys for offering something like this, if it can help, like Ashley had said with some of the kids, but I'm coming in front of you tonight with concerns for the program, the contract that is being voted on tonight, and not addressing you as board members tonight, but as parents. I think we need to look into this program further, and what exactly entails. Is this something a parent gets consent on first? Can a parent decline their child participating in the program? And is our children's info shared with the database? I know some of these things may seem like odd questions, but I've been shown some data on this program, and I have some concerns about what involves in transparency. I know there are some of you that feel as parents need to just trust the system, but after the last two years of having my parental choices, and what's best for my child taken away, I can't help but question everything and anything. And when the government is involved in funding things like this, I will tread with concern. Please, before approving this, I'm asking for more transparency and questions answered. Like a friend said today, and it makes perfect sense, why are we being given these so-called resources for our children's mental health by the same people that caused two years of mental health issues? As of now, with what I have been shown, I am not comfortable with this, and until there's more transparency, I am not comfortable with involving my child in the program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? We will move on to our superintendent legislative update.
Senator Mashawn, I know we don't normally do this, but the contract for tonight is for speech and language services only, it is not for anything else. So, because we are short-staffed, it is an option we're looking at, it is nothing for anything else.
Can I have a couple questions?
We'll go further into that, but I just wanna clarify very clearly. For members, effective immediately, the wearing of masks on school buses is no longer required per CDC rules that were released last Friday. I notified the staff this afternoon, or this is today, I should say, I don't know if it was early this morning, or, individuals can still wear shoes to wear masks, face masks, if they also choose. The other change that we are gonna be implementing, or I will be announcing tomorrow to the staff, is that all the requirements by the Compton County Health Department regarding school protocols and so forth, if you've looked, have all been removed. So I am announcing to the staff that beginning tomorrow, the district will no longer require... So I am announcing to the staff that beginning tomorrow, the district will no longer require social distancing measures in the classroom where we've asked, if possible. Classrooms and lunchrooms may return to pre-COVID-19 procedures and furniture placement. In addition, visitor, violent building visitors will be reinstated to the level that they were pre-COVID-19, and we will follow those protocols, which will also include, obviously, iChat, as outlined on the form. I will still allow staff, at their discretion, teachers, to continue implementing that social distancing if they choose to, in their class, for their comfort level. But as far as the district-wide protocols, we are moving more towards pre-COVID-19. So that will be going out in email, actually, I think it's supposed to go out about 10 o'clock tonight to staff. So we are beginning moving back to normalcy. The second thing, I'd like to update you on some legislative news. Last week, you may have heard, the biggest story that was released was the House billion-dollar tax proposal that they announced, which unveiled last Thursday. We're still looking at what that entails, but they have a huge tax cut. I'm going to go over a little bit more. One of the things that we also heard is an increase in state aid. If you recall, Michigan launched internet gaming in January of 2021. And now, a year after that decision, representatives from the Michigan Gaming Board said this week that the internet gaming revenue significantly exceeded expectations for the 2021, '22 fiscal year by about tenfold. It was approximately, for the school aid fund, has generated $87.1 million, where they only projected it to generate $8.6. The 2022 gaming impact, the Michigan Gaming Commission, impact on the school aid fund is expected to go to $169 million. So again, there's a lot of revenue that's now in the school aid fund that could get us closer to what the study, how property funds schools. The Senate Education Committee met on three bills last week that were addressed three very different topics. One is Senate Bill 107. It was sponsored by Mike McDonald, Senator Mike McDonald, legislation regarding the dangers of opioid abuse. The committee adopted a substitute version of the Senate Bill 107 last Tuesday, which made significant changes to the original bill that came out. The current bill basically requires the MBE to develop and adopt and make two to three models of instructional videos and topics regarding opioid addiction or abuse. The provision in this bill only allows for one video to be released. It also substitutes removing the language that it has to be implemented, or required to be implemented, ninth grade curriculum, to it is recommended to be offered to ninth graders. Next one is Senate Bill 726. This was a legislation we sponsored by Dale Zorn. This bill would amend the Michigan Public School Retirement System to allow retirees to be re-employed as substitutes after a two-month waiting period, without any effects on their retirement benefit. They're trying to get substitutes and other employees. As you know, the current, you have to wait a full year in certain aspects, but a full year. The committee are testifying on the teacher shortage and the teacher pipeline. This would be strongly recommended as an option for those that are retired, to be able to come back and continue using their wealth, should they choose to. And finally, the last one, the Bill Hurd testimony on the Michigan merit curriculum to allow computer coding to qualify as a language other than English. It was discussed in the House Bill 4326, which would, some consideration for different types of coding that exist, as well as questions regarding teacher certifications regarding coding, but we are watching this one because it could provide options to district. I mentioned about the House tax cut, that was the talk of last year, that's approximately a $1.7 billion tax cut proposal. It would reduce the Michigan income tax rate from the current 4.25 to 3.9, as well as lower the age of being able to claim additional exemptions to 62. The vote was on House Bill 5054, which would use 1.5 billion for the general fund surplus to give them to the local governments, police, retirement systems. So we're watching this as if the impact of any tax cut would have on the school aid fund. We are waiting for the Senate and the House to release their budgets. We heard from the governor several weeks ago. Again, it should be coming anytime. There were, a conversation I had with a board member regarding, and I know you had mentioned it earlier, that you received information, emails regarding questions from community members, but we have received multiple FOIA requests, and just so the board, I don't know if you're aware of the number that we've received, but I will give you, since Jamie started in October. There was one that I forgot to put on there, was Bridgette Shuboy's request. We knew about Mrs. Shuboy's, the board knew about that one. There was a FOIA request for a contract, but we've also received FOIA requests from Mr. Morgan regarding all rules, documentation, communication on the hiring process of the head football coach in 2001, including any conversations that occurred on personal devices and work related to public hiring for his entirety, before and after. We also received a FOIA request from Brandon Day regarding electronic communications regarding any reference to Brandon Day. We received a FOIA request from Tracy Bartels regarding any electronic communication with a board member, such as emails, texts, and personal on school devices regarding Brandon Day and his contract. We received another FOIA request from Tracy Bartels regarding all electronic communication between board members regarding myself and my contract. We received a FOIA request from Mr. Morgan regarding personnel files for anyone who was involved in the hiring of the football coach, as well as any digital communication, I'm summarizing with length, it's quite lengthy. Any discussion about splitting of pay between individuals involved in the hiring process during or before or after the hiring process, including but not limited to the football. Details on any school bond funds or resources used for the creation of new field art dedication last year, details of any school funds or agreement for vehicles used by athletic or personnel vehicle. We received another FOIA from Mr. Morgan regarding all communications, including but not limited to paper, email, text, regarding the transfer of a student from Elmont to Richmond during the current year who participated in wrestling, including all paperwork and forms filed with the MHSA for this student. We received another FOIA request from Mr. Morgan, who was informed that was, he wanted any forms that were created, possibly because of a FOIA request, and that would allow people to sign off stating that they were known, that they are obligated to provide that. We received a FOIA request regarding any communication from Mr. Morgan, again, from any digital, written, text pertaining to open gym practices, a list of participants that said practices, any video and forms of communication regarding the video footage of practices, any communications regarding the role book, and quote, "lead recruiter serves" per its website, and the details of communication regarding how an individual bought, brought in over $850,000 of the school of choice money. We received a FOIA request just recently from Mr. DeSharn, requesting a copy of the current appraisal for the '21-'22 school year for Mr. Superintendent. Of course, those are the ones. We have not had this many in a long time, but as a board, I think it's too important to understand what people are requesting, so I will provide this to you as board meeting going forward. At Lee Elementary School, the teachers and staff are looking forward to having guest readers, March is Reading Month. So if you haven't signed up as a board member, please sign up if your schedule allows. This past Friday, they did have a PBIS assembly as part of their moral focus, their moral focus of the assembly was on leadership. This past Friday was also the spelling bee. Emma Gibson took first place, and McKenna Myrrh?
Yes.
I'm like at the last name, Myrrh, is it?
Yes.
Myrrh was runner-up, so congratulations. Pretty stressful when you watch these kids do spelling bees, but they all worked very hard. Just a reminder, this Wednesday is preschool roundup, and this kindergarten roundup is this Thursday. Middle school reports that winter sports have ended. They do also have, in March's Reading Month, planned out, the calendar set. Acts of kindness, if you watched on Facebook, you saw many signs of kids providing acts of kindness to other students throughout the building were posted, and the band is getting ready for pre-festival. High school, March is Reading Month begins tomorrow. They begin with reading passages and announcements, during the announcements every day, and prizes will be given if students can identify the passages from popular novels and literature. Cala's visits are also being planned for this week, Lake Superior and Paul Mitchell is scheduled for March 2nd and 3rd respectively. Congratulations to the girls bowling team, who won regionals, and will move on to state. And boys came in second, and they are also moving on to state. I'd also like to congratulate the competitive cheer, who won their regionals this past Saturday, and are also moving on to states. Just a reminder that this Thursday's basketball game is against Armada. It is our Oxford fundraiser, Oxford Community fundraiser. There's several activities going on. I know there's some shirts that you had purchased, Mrs. DeSharn, and this whole shirt, I don't know if you have it out. The fundraisers for the shirts, students wearing the shirts, we showed it the last week, but it might have been two meetings ago. Students will be wearing those, as well as staff. Ms. Duran and her culinary arts students will be baking that night, doing a fundraiser. Mrs. Shaq is working in conjunction with the band at Armada to play the fight, the Oxford Fight Song during halftime. Mrs. Flora, the choir students will be singing the National Anthem before the game. And Mr. Len and Mr. Smallwood are working with the student governments at Armada. They have a penny drive in the school that raises the most money. The principal of the other school has to wear the mascot outfit of the other school, so hopefully, Armada will be wearing a Boo Devil outfit on Thursday. Today, we announced Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Elena Constance at the elementary school was selected. Mrs. Molly Shaq at the middle school, and Mrs. Abby Smallwood at the high school. These three teachers will now move on to the county level for County Teacher of the Year. Just a reminder, or I should say reminder, excuse me. There is a state law that requires the intermediate school districts to establish a common calendar for all districts within the county. In Macomb County, the common calendar is defined as a minimum days off for breaks, such as, or they may suggest days off that might be professional development days, like Martin Luther King or Election Day. In Macomb County, the common calendar primarily defines the break in December, January, winter break in February, and spring break, which has traditionally been the first week of The Macomb County School Board voted to alter the common calendar beginning the '23-'24 school year, which would be this year's sophomores. If you're a parent and you're planning your spring break trip for your senior in '23-'24, the spring break has been, will be moved to the last, beginning the last Monday in March. It will be one week earlier. This will align with other counties, such as Wade, Oakland, St. Clair, Genesee, Washington, and LaPierre. It also takes into consideration the testing requirements of students, districts that have staff that live in multiple counties and different grades. The Macomb Intermediate School District took input from the superintendents of the county. They resnapped with the teacher union leaderships throughout Macomb County, and again, they surveyed neighboring counties. And so, a couple weeks ago, the Macomb ISD Board of Education approved, voted and approved, the spring break moved in '23-'24. I have already had preliminary conversations with the REA, and verbally, we have agreed on the calendar change for the '23-'24 school year. So once we sign it, that will be updated on the website. But I just want to, it is coming. We are required by law to follow it unless we apply for a waiver and get it approved. But our intent is, so we're a little over a year out before we take the state's effect, but it will be coming on the county, on the state, on our district website very soon, once we have all the documents signed. And I just would ask as a board, just a reminder, that if you have received any criticisms, complaints, or suggestions, that you do bring them to my attention, so that if it's concern that you're having and sharing with other board members, it's a concern that needs to be brought to my attention and warranted. It is part of my contract, at the last paragraph, which basically says, "The board individually and collectively shall refer properly all criticisms, complaints, and suggestions called to attention to the superintendent for study and recommendation, if the individual board member deems it warranted based on the nature of the complaint," so a criticism or suggestion. So I just would ask that if you hear something, and you're having conversations with other board members, please bring it to my attention so that I can address it and look into it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Items of interest from the board. We'll start down here with Sheri.
I'm all set.
Margaret?
I just want to thank you for your comments at the beginning of the board meeting, and I look forward to hearing more of what your feelings are as we move forward.
Kyle?
Aye.
Danielle?
Kevin?
The only thing that I have is, Mr. Wamsley has put out that we have the ISD budget meeting April 21st at the ISD. I cannot make that, I will not be in town.
The board treasure intends that.
Is that normally what happens? Okay. So that's Dan Yow, right?
Yes.
Okay, so just to make sure that you have that on your calendar.
You said it was the 21st?
It's the 21st at 5:30.
Okay.
Typically, when you come back, you report to the board, and then they'll approve the ISD's budget, so you'll get your report back. Kevin?
Thank you. This time, we are going to our action items. I am looking for a motion for the approval of the 2022-23 middle school and high school course catalog.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2022-2023 middle school and high school course catalog as presented and discussed at the February 14th, 2022 Board of Education meeting.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. I am looking for a motion for the approval of the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment number two.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve fiscal year 2022 budget amendment number two, as presented at the February 14th, 2022 Board of Education meeting, and outline the attached resolution.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Whoops, nope, it's a roll call.
You're approving a huge amount of money to amend the budget.
Okay. I'll stop when we get a dollar amount there, but that's fine, okay. This is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Deb? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. I need a motion for the approval of a contract with the ILUMA.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a contract with ILUMA for a total not to exceed $46,193.66, for which funding from the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget is authorized as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just have some personal comments.
Okay.
I'm disappointed that this is the round it ended up being, just as, I talked to Mr. Wamsley about it, but as a parent who's had a student in private virtual therapy, and within Richmond's district, virtual therapy, we would be better off saving our money, because we're not, all we're doing at this point is doing it just to satisfy IUP contracts. It's garbage. I'm glad with my own kid going through it, especially for the fact that this is being used at the elementary school, and with preschoolers and lower-level elementary kids, they're literally going to get nothing out of it. I would love to see, or talk more about it, if there's an option to waive Jackson from it. For the time being, he'd get 30 minutes in his classroom, it's better served than 30 minutes on virtual. I think we could save the $46,000 for something much better. I think we could save the $46,000 for something much better.
I disagree completely. Wait, hold on, hold on. I disagree completely. I look at this, the way I look at what we're doing here, we're trying to fix a situation because of where we're at with the person that can't do it, correct? Or that's the gist of where we got here. So to say that the whole entire thing is bad just based on your child's experience is appalling to say as a board. So I would...
That's your question.
I mean that.
Brian, can I just ask, are there no, some piece out there that we can get somebody?
Excuse me, from the audience, you need to be quiet, please.
We have tried to find contracted companies, edge staff particularly. We posted, there is a shortage in Combs County. There's 208 vacant positions. Of that, 83 of them are just specialized. Every interview that we've had recently with directors, there is a shortage. We cannot, this is, what we're trying to do is a real person is our priority. Our priority. We can't find anybody. So I asked Mr. Burkmar, and he's done probably most of the labor and doing research, to look at what options do we have out there. And this is one that we came up with that feels, it requires more costs from the district end to be compliant. And we're going to have to have a payroll program, the student down, have designated laptop. This person is not doing the IUPs. It's just providing the services of the speech from a license.
And what we have to comply with by law.
Correct. Right now, we are out of compliance or with some IUPs, we'll be out of compliance because we don't have anybody to provide the service. We have taken our other speech language person that we have on staff, which is a point eight, and really for 18, 19, 18, 19 days, which is pretty much the rest of the year, made her full-time to cover the IUP, doing the paperwork part of the IUPs. She already has a caseload, let's see, the caseload max is 60, so she's probably at 45, if I, probably a little less, I'm looking at 47-ish.
So she might be able to pick up some?
She does not have any inner schedule to pick up more students.
I just, I understand Danielle's, just, I'm a preschool teacher. I had to do Zoom with preschoolers. So I understand the engagement part through virtual, but I understand that it's possibly the only option we have to be compliant. But I understand where she's coming from, that it's hard to engage children, young children that age, three, four, five. So, but I get that we have to be in compliance. I just wish that there was...
I wish we had a person, we have to have a person. I wouldn't be bringing this to you.
But I mean, but the point is, is that I'd like to make sure that they're getting the services they need and it's not just because we have to be compliant, so that's...
I have a question for that, is when did we start looking for this replacement?
I have an idea because you were working with Christie. Yeah, it was like two months before she went out on leave. We've contracted several agencies to provide to me.
Right, yeah, I know we talked with Christie about the fact that there's, they have to use an agency as opposed to just posting it in some cases because it is such a specialized piece. But I'm just curious why we waited till eight weeks prior to start the process? When it was known to the district.
Well, the person that we're replacing went out early.
Right.
So that also threw a reason that we didn't expect her to go out that early.
Sure, but the process of looking for somebody could have been effectively started when the issue was brought to the attention of the district.
Well, as you can see in your personnel report, we've been looking for a resource room for Mr. West since he left. We've been looking for since October, a resource room teacher to address. We've been looking for people, the candidate pool is very small.
Oh, sure.
And so it's, I think that when, I believe when Mrs. Lashbrook realized the need, that's when she started looking at every option we had.
I think it was, I mean, I really don't think we would have gotten anybody anyways, but I feel like the process should have been started when the district was notified that this person was going to be out in April or end of March, middle of March, or whatever it was going to be. And it was only started essentially 10 weeks before there was no choice. Yeah. I think we kind of dropped the ball on looking.
Because 10 weeks is two and a half months ahead of time we were looking for someone, so it's so...
Did you see anything?
No. Especially the district request. And Mrs. Lashbrook, the best she could, looking for someone to fill a need of the organization. As I said, we've had a posting for a resource room teacher for months. We've got zero candidates, zero opportunities. We've done on websites. But we're not alone, there's districts across the county that are short-staffed.
Any other discussion?
I guess maybe, I don't know, this is a question I need to ask Tony down the road, but, or maybe Brian, Danielle. Is there an option for me to opt out? And make it like write out a statement to say, hey, I'm opting out my kid from services until his regular provider returns? Or?
If that's, if that's an option as a parent.
Like recognizing that, yes, I am stepping outside of his IUP. Is that an option for parents to opt out?
We would love to look into that if that's something a parent wants to do.
I just wasn't sure if it was something for you or...
Did I miss anything? I know you've talked to them a lot, I asked Mr. Burkmar.
The only thing that I can say, again, we really want someone in person. And when I stepped in, I know we were at the end of trying to make sure we're getting our services before we're going. The two things I'd point out here is while we haven't used them yet, they're a company that's designed, they're not a physical therapist or a speech therapist, or a speech therapist that is just doing this. They've designed a platform with games that they've built in knowing that they're providing this service virtually. So it's not like COVID where, okay, now we have to do, where they design, again, whether it's the same quality as someone in person. They say they are, I would say that, and we are picking the best person through the best situation we can, not any solo person. The other aspect that's, of course, they will guarantee the length of this contract so when that's sort of services that we are owed, they will continue with this summer. So parents that have mixed time to do that out of comfort or their own, like that's done. We don't have to take them somewhere else or bring them up to the school if we were to find someone to provide services.
But if we are required to have that additional services onsite, I'll staff them. If a parent wants it onsite and so, we'll staff them. But at that point, we have a little more flexibility with the parents and their schedule this summer to provide those additional hours that are owed.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret? Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
And Deb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. This time, I am looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 8C of the Michigan Opens Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purposes of negotiations.
Do I have support? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. When we return out of closed session, we will just be adjourned, so there will be no other portions to the meeting.